Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Can you read, uh, number one by title?
This is a letter from Jim Harvey, CEO of the Central Arkansas Water, and is regarding the repeal of Resolution 2001-10, Schedule of System Development Chargers.
Alderman Bestel, as that be called, I think that's, again, as we discussed at the last council meeting, that the Water, Central Arkansas Water is going through a process of deciding whether or not to implement, I guess what are commonly known as impact fees, and it appears that this communication indicates that they're gonna put that off for some short period of time, and I think it might not be a bad idea during that period of time that this council maybe have an opportunity to visit with the water representative of Central Arkansas Water so that they can answer some questions so that we can be better informed if we decide to take a position on this either prior to or subsequent to the vote. It's my understanding, Mr. City Attorney, and if you want to help me out on this to confirm that, you know, what the role of the city council might be, I don't, I think in my recollection, if there is a rate change, both the city board of Little Rock and the city council of North Little Rock have to vote to reject that or it goes into effect. Either that, or we don't have a say, one of the two.
Yeah, that's my recollection as well.
Okay, if you would do, if you would double check that so that we can be prepared for what our role, our formal role might be, and we might even have a public hearing at this city council, to have any kind of input that one might want to have off the case.
You'll read the last sentence of the cover letter?
I see your eye.
And I believe, if I understand right, that the, those actions are, those actions go into effect, I believe it's thirty days, John, Mr. Thurman, I believe it's...
Maybe we can add a public hearing today. It's the city council. Um, um, um.
That's right.
Okay, all right, so maybe we can, you know, take up both some education and then decide whether we want to force anything, you know, such that that opportunity, and I'll see if I can talk to Mr. Harvey, if he has someone here at the first council meeting in January. With that, I hear a motion to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, number six?
Number five.
Ah, excuse me, I'm sorry, number five.
Do you want it read or by title?
I want it by title, and then for Mr. Boils to come up here, if he's here, if he's here, oh, he's here.
This is a memorandum from Robert Boils, planning director to Mayor Hayes in the city council, it's regarding the subject of minor alteration of the Seventh and Maple Residential Project.
Boils, come to microphone, and let me visit where you had the meeting to on the matter we talked about coming up.
Okay.
I think I can talk to you enough about that.
Of course, I've read the memo, but could you?
Summarize it?
Yes, and explain to us exactly what kind of alterations are gonna occur?
Okay, at the corner of Seventh and Maple, there is that two-story, used to be a boarding house, the plan was to move that about a block down the street, and they've gotten into the project and find that they'll have to disassemble that in many pieces, and that will be very costly. What they would like to do is, they were wanting to have a potlot that was interior, they were gonna move that to Seventh Street, where that house was going to be placed, and add the number of rooms by enlarging the two large buildings that are being built, so there's the same number of units being provided. There will be a smaller footprint for the apartments, and more parking will be available in interior to the block, so it should help the neighborhood by reduced parking, you know, they were gonna have limited parking for that complex.
Okay, uh, do any of these, assumed we had adopted this, then I remember when we adopted the, was it ordinances resolution?
It was a special use permit.
Special use permit, when we adopted the special use permit, we, we put in the permit, the picture?
Yes, you did.
And it also, you know, said that, you know, they were up here saying what they were gonna build this out of?
Correct.
Okay, and so I'm assuming if we adopt this, then we're saying that this is okay, this, this minor alteration. Are any of these materials any different on this than they were?
I don't believe so, those are all, that's all the new construction?
Right, but...
Same materials that was previous.
Okay, all right, all right, well, I'll take your word for it, okay, that's all the questions I have.
Procedure of question, a procedure of question, because you and I didn't get a chance really to visit about this because I've been out of pocket, out of town. We had dr, we adopted this as a PUD, or essentially a PUD?
Correct.
And that any changes would have to come back in?
Right.
To the best of my knowledge, we've only done two of these, to the, I mean, I think we did the one out at Bethany and 161?
Right.
Or one, whatever?
Right.
And then we did this one. What we said when we put this together, that any changes would have to be, to come back before the council to be approv, approved to do so?
Correct.
My only question I have is that we did not establish notification methods to the neighbors, et cetera, to do this, are, do you think that we should set a public hearing and approve this at the next meeting, and a set of procedure to do those things with?
We did talk a little before, a few weeks ago, and I did, my staff contacted Bell Construction in the U-Dire.
Bell, and the ones I suggested, yeah.
And the ones that I contacted, and I didn't get any word that anyone, I know Bell specifically was not concerned with, but I did want to outline specifically because you did have that condition, that any significant alterations needed to come back before the board.
Right now, we're considering this not to be a significant alteration, and let the council, you know, take some kind of action by motion, and, excuse me a second. Go ahead.
Any alteration to where you take that you're not gonna move a house to a piece of property, I want to get this procedure down, because we've got one very sensitive out on 161, and, and, and if the guy decide, if the person decided, well, he didn't want to put the bill in there, but he wanted to move it, that's a major alteration, and I, I think the best way to do this one is to simply set a public hearing, and to have a resolution prepared for the next council meeting to approve it.
That's, that's the point of why we filed a petition on this.
And that's why I asked for it.
All right, then, then, Mr. Boils, you know, we don't need a motion, and, and throw in a motion on this, we'll just take, as a sense of the council, you know, on their motion to accept and file, that we need to have legislation, or a resolution that specifically authorizes the, the resolution or an ordinance?
An ordinance, authorized.
That authorizes this change, and make sure that proper notification is given.
One other thing, Robert, before you leave there, is to make sure those materials have not materially changed, because I don't know, I'd say they haven't, but I don't know, that's, the print is too small for me to read, so I don't know, I don't so know what they are, so we want to make sure of that.
All right, motion, somebody, motion to accept and file?
No move.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Solid communication.
All right, before we, before we go to the hearings, I'd like to take a moment and, and share with the council what is a good day for us, also, Stephanie, if you want to come to the microphone, Stephanie's getting her twenty-year pen, and...
Oh, good.
They do go by, and of course, we're also happy to report that last Saturday, our finance director, Mr. Sussman, went home.
Oh, right.
So Bob is at home, we still don't want to claim that he's out of the woods, but at least he's out of the hospital, and I think the comment, not anything negative against our hospital, but after being there for three months, or a little over three months, he said, you know, he told the doctors that he needed to get him home before they killed him. So, so Bob is at home, and his prayers are definitely with us, are with him and his family, but on this occasion, we're happy to, to share with Stephanie her twenty-year history, and thank her particularly for the last three months, but not in any way minimizing the other nineteen years and nine months that, you know, you've helped us wade through the numbers for the city of North Little Rock, so if I could present you your twenty-year pen, and tell you with a, with a little hug, thank you very much for your help, particularly the last three months.
Thank you.
And, and now baptized by fire, you know, over the last several years, we also are able to present his five-year pen, and they do go by fairly quickly, Paul Sussman, our city attorney, and so if I could do the honor of presenting you with your, with your five-year pen, and also a certificate that indicates that we presented Paul Sussman in recognition of his five years of service, great place to recognize these years of service that you're presenting to the city of North Little Rock, and look forward to continuing with your talent, and also Andrea Wood? Wood, Andrea Woods, we are happy to have her on board, and happy to thank you for five years. You don't have to give me a hug. I'll go ahead, since we're back on the other, and, and probably be a good, a good point to go ahead and do that, with regard to the hearing on the amended changes in the plan, is the first council meeting or the second council meeting? First council meeting, what day is that, somebody got a calendar?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, goodness gracious, yeah.
Like, three weeks in.
Uh, the fourteenth of January, some of us even gonna get a little older between now and then, so I'll set...
Speak for yourself.
What is, what is?
Speak for yourself.
Well, we are gonna be older, some of us will pass a birthday between now and then, but all of us will get older.
Well, it's merely an anniversary of our thirty-ninth.
I agree with you, so, public hearing on the proposed changes in the, in the, what do we call the project, Robert?
Loft, Ardena Loft.
Seventh Street Loft Apartments, Ardena Loft Apartments, without objection, that'll be at 705 on the fourteenth. All right, now, let's go to our public hearings, and the first one, let me go ahead and request the formation of our improvement district for Willow Beach. John Thurman's here, John, you just want to make a quick comment, and then we'll open the floor for any, any comments for anyone else.
That's right, I've provided for each of you a summary of all the people who've signed it, and the total assessed valuation, and the assessed valuation of those who signed it, sixty-nine percent signed it, and this will give water to Willow Beach, the city and Central Arkansas Water, and the improvement district will each contribute a third, and I have the three commissioners, if we adopt the ordinance, who will be there with me, Mr. Yanker, Bill Turner, and Ms. Martine Kimber.
Y'all want to wave to us, so we, it's nice to have you with us, and we, we'll be optimistically calling you commissioners here shortly. Thank you, Mr. Thurman, the microphone's now open, anyone else care to comment on this, on the Willow Beach Improvement District, and I'll tell you, why don't, unless there's an objection, Alderman Thomas and Alderman Dobbinson and I would like to go ahead and call?
Please, call it.
Call that, would you go to that item on the agenda, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. Formulating 193, okay, it was read two times on December the tenth, and returned to the calendar, and a public hearing is set for this date.
Would you please, uh, call that legislation?
This is an ordinance established in municipal improvement district, declaring emergency, third and final reading.
Uh, yeah, we got one amendment, what's that amendment? All right, improvement district number one, that's correct, so it'll be, we're blank, and refers to a district, that'll be number one, Alderman Gibson, you make that motion?
I'll second that.
And Alderman Thomas seconded on a motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson, Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Commissioners, we, we appreciate the work you're about to do, and we look forward bringing, bringing you water from Central Arkansas Water, thank y'all for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thurman, happy new year to all of you, let's go back to the second public hearing, it'll be on the redistricting of ward boundaries, I think we've all discussed that, and it seems like there's a consensus, but since we're about to act on that tonight, I'm gonna go ahead and open it for public hearing, anybody want to make any comments on that? Going once, going twice, that public hearing's adjourned, third public hearing is on the budget for the year 2002, I'll open that public hearing, anyone want to speak to the budget, come to the microphone. Going once, going twice, I'll adjourn that public hearing, and I think that takes us to, to open?
Yes, sir. First item is Resolution 01-186, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance, and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
All right, Mr. Sussman?
Yeah, Mayor, I was visiting with code enforcement today, they could not be here tonight, and they asked me to ask you to hold that, they've had preliminary discussions with the owner, and believe he will proceed with real bill taken at soon.
All right, I think I ask you this every year, but since we're not changing councils this year, legislation can hold over till the following year?
Yes, that's my opinion.
Okay, all right, we'll just hold that then, next item?
Next item is ordinance 01-89, it's Mayor Hayes, Alderman Yildin, Witcher and Height.
I think we probably want that called.
Okay, this was read one time, November the twenty-sixth, and returned to the calendar, and...
This is an ordinance redistricting ward boundaries, following the 2,000 census, second reading, as amended.
Spender rules, place on third. On the motion to spender rules, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
It's happened to me once already, redistricting season.
I'd like to compliment the council on, and also the community on, and particularly the leadership of Alderman Yildin, and, and working us through this, and now that we've...
Baron Cross.
And Baron Cross, that's one of our, our good friends at Baron Cross for their, both their voice and their understanding in, in working through this, so, Alderman Dobbinson?
I'm just gonna say, I was gonna vote either way they wanted, and I understood this was their choice, and that's the reason I voted.
All right, well, well, we're all, we're all now in, in the same wards with different alignment, since it's a bit, Alderman, Bestel, Thomas, excuse me, Alderman?
Mayor, so there will be a clear understanding of the record, when we amended it last time, we referred to it as Alternative Eight dated 11/27/01, which is the small map, and of course, while we were looking at the large map, I didn't check the date on that large map, but it's the same as the small map, but it has, it carries a different date, Greg, you call it the date, what is the date on that, Robert?
It is the same map.
It, okay, it is, it is the same map.
Is everybody clear, Mr. City Attorney, are we clear of what we're doing now?
I, I'll take a look at it, make sure we are, it's my understanding that, you know, that, I have not personally looked at the maps, but I assume that's the case, and if it's not, I'll let you know.
All right, what amendment was correct?
Just for information, this, the, these new ward lines are in effect actually January one of 2003, is that correct?
Because that's when the first alderman will be elected from them.
That's right, and anything between now and then is the responsibility of the current alderman and the current...
Two, oh, two, you're talking about two, not three.
Yeah, that's not right.
I'll look it up, there is a case, or an AG's opinion out there that I read in reference to, okay, in other words, does the area each alderman represent change? Obviously, their votes are the same, they don't have to have an election or anything, but they're still in this ward, I, I'm not sure whether they actually go into effect, if it's on January first, 2003.
I would find it very hard, I would find it very hard to believe that we will, we will, in order to balance the wards out for the next election, which is in November of next year?
Right, right.
That, that that would not take effect for purposes of the voting anyway.
Yeah, it'll take effect for purposes of voting, now, on the interim, I, I don't know what effect it could have.
Well, what, what I would, what I would suggest is that we look, I mean, there's that one area there that, that, you know, that may not really know who their aldermen are.
They may have four.
They might have four aldermen.
Well, that'd be good.
That'd be good.
That'd be good, but, but I, I don't have any doubt in my mind, you know, that, that for the purposes of, of election, that, that what we do tonight will set the boundaries for the vote.
Yes, yes, absolutely, and you gotta realize, there's...
Yeah, it is.
Mayor, there's the ninety-day period that a hundred voters can file a petition to have this challenge in circuit court, so it's still not in effect.
Well, I understand that, you know, I understand, you know, and they've got a similar thing for a lot of other things that we do too, but, Alderman Gibson?
I don't let Mr. Sussman figure all this out, because we have people who are actually, are in the state legislature, or whose district has moved, and they did, and yet they continue to serve because they're in that district in which they were elected for the period of time, it's irrelevant in this case, unless we have to have an election for some of it, but, uh...
Wouldn't the filing date, though?
Well, we could have done this in May.
Have an effect on this also?
I could have done this in March or April.
That's correct.
And had the same result, and I'm making sure, we're gonna work for, for the, everybody in the cities, we always do.
Well, I just want to say, welcome, Baron Cross to war too, and keep working, anyway, just...
We may have four aldermen, so, but, but we know we all like Baron Cross, so we're gonna, we're gonna have a whole city council working for Baron Cross.
There you go.
Absolutely, uh, where are we now? We got sidetracked.
191.
Ninety-one.
Do what?
191.
All right, call it.
Um, okay, Mayor Hayes, it was read one time, December the tenth.
This is an ordinance adopting a budget for the 2002 fiscal year for the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency, second reading.
Which place?
I'm comfortable with it.
Please call, I was gonna...
Then, then, see what we get, and on the next one.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made, and second, we spend the rules to go to third reading, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
This is an ordinance adopting a budget for the 2002 fiscal year for the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Alderman Dobbinson? Mayor, council, I've just, I understand, I looked at the numbers, and it just doesn't seem possible right now, but at some point in, because of the tax receipt had to come in from December, but in January, let's look and see if we can see if we can find some cost of living increase in there, no more than, whatever it is, one or two percent, I think we still need to look at that, I understand it, with the salary survey, there's an opportunity on anniversary dates to some, make it five or ten percent, or somewhere in between there, but I still want to make sure we look out for those, I mean, a lot of city employees, last year, well, this year, during March, went out on a limb, supported a sales tax, and I want, and that, of course, they're getting that half of that penny, and to make sure that they receive a piece of that, they have started to see some benefits on that, but I want to connect, to continue, I know we gotta look at some one-time cost issues, but I still want us to continue in any way possible from the non-capital improvement side, to find some way to reward those employees, and I think they're doing a real good job, as well as some of the other suggestions I made about looking at some quarterly reporting to make sure we can benefit, you know, benefit to those who are doing a good job, and we'll know where others stand if they're not.
Let, let me repeat that, that, that the adoption of this budget does contain raises, obviously, there are pre, there are contractual raises for the fire department that are in there, there are also anniversary raises for our employees, it averaged somewhere between, usually, I think, four to six percent in that neighborhood, so that the adoption of this budget does contain raises for our employees, the one thing that you're right, Alderman Dobbinson, it doesn't contain, is what we've historically done in terms of across-the-board raises, what we refer to as cost of living, so, you know, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that, that there are, are indeed raises that are provided for in this budget, I think several of you heard me talk before, that right now, and Mr. Sussman's giving me a little bit more cause for optimism, but Judge Gray is gonna rule any day now on a lawsuit that has a very significant effect on us and every other jurisdiction in Pulaski County with regard to use tax, and that could cause us to have to escrow up to $700,000 a year, and that would have a severe impact on what flexibility we might have, so, that, and, and I keep getting a little bit concerned about what we're gonna show for this month in terms of our sales tax receipts, we ought to know sometime this week what our numbers are, so, you know, we're not saying by any means, Alderman Dobbinson, that we're not gonna come back in January, maybe even early February, and make some recommendation, but I don't feel it should be prudent at this time to go forward with that large, several of those large unknowns out there, with that, I'm sorry...
I have one other statement too, that I know it's in there, and that, under our sales tax proposals, some improvements for our parks and recs, but I'm, I'm a little disappointed in, in some of the, the management numbers there, I mean, we're running a deficit of parks and recs, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, seems that perhaps we need to take a closer look at that, and try to manage those numbers a little bit better, and close to what those, I budgeted for, there's a budget, the budget's out there for a purpose, and it gives you, yes, it's a shot in the dark, and some, with some intelligence behind that, and you want to at least try to manage to it, and then at some point, lets you know, hey, we're gonna meet these projections or not, and I'm, it's, it's, well, you're some $900,000, you know, off, that's, 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 that's a big number.
No doubt about it, we, we can talk a little bit more with Mr. Rhodes here in just a minute or two, when we come in to amend this existing budget, if you'd like to, Ms. Thomas, before I call this for a vote, am I not mistaken, somebody gave me some amendments, didn't you have a couple amendments on the general fund revenue, did I note that?
That's in the, that's this year just...
That's not the 2001, that's this year, okay, Alderman Thomas?
I guess I had one, so let's, just suppose that Judge Gray doesn't rule, in a way that would hurt us, can we immediately take a look at this raise?
Well, we, we're looking at those raises now, to be honest with you, through personnel and, and our office, to try to determine, you know, what we might be able to, to recommend, so, you know, the answer to that question is yes, we're, we're looking at that right now, and as soon as we can, you know, get some feeling as to what she says, we have the year-end carryover in terms of the general fund, so, you know, the answer to that is yes.
That's, in that, that survey that we did, that's part of that.
That's correct.
That's what, the monies that we're looking for, is to fund those recommended raises.
Well, it's, we're looking at, we're tinkering with that recommendation now, in terms, some of those positions had increases as high as forty percent, and, and I don't know that we really think, as they apply, that that probably is, is an equitable jump, so we're looking at each of these individually through personnel and finance, to try to be prepared, depending on how much funds we have available, when we find that out, as to what we can recommend.
Let me ask you another question too, in the past, it's been, it's been the history set of the city to offer a cost of living, a, a raise, an annual basis rate.
So, we're talking about...
Where do, where do you get your figure, what do y'all use it?
What we can do, I mean, what, I mean, if it's what, three percent or two percent,
where, where are you getting that, that number, what are you using to base your, the amount or the percentage that you pay the tax that...
Large, what we can, what we can come up with, Alderman Gibson?
It's twofold, it's twofold, there is a, a number, and I believe it's put out by the Census Bureau, that has the southwest district of the United States, and it breaks the country down into six districts, and, and we have tried over the number of years, some, to come where, some... What are you using to base your, uh, the amount or the percentage that you, uh, tie the tax that...
Well, we can come up with.
It's twofold, it's twofold. There is a, uh, a number, and I believe it's put out by the Census Bureau, that has the southwest district of the United States, and it breaks the country down into six districts. And, and we have tried over the number of years, some, uh, to come where, somewhere close to where that number is. And that'll, that's published on every quarter, that's what it is on a rolling number. And, uh, I've got one question I wanna ask.
But, so we're not using the consumer price index?
It is a consumer, no, it's a cost of living index that's put out by the Census Bureau for the southwest region of the United States.
The southwest region.
But, like last year, we did five percent because...
Which was, it was two point three last year, and we gave five percent.
I mean, because we were, you know, we'd passed the sales tax, we campaigned on the fact that we were gonna try to raise our employees' salaries, and, uh, and so, you know, we, we exceeded the cost of living, uh, you know, by almost twice. Uh, so, it really comes down to, though, if we can't meet it and, and, and we're having a bad economy, we have, uh, a reduced, uh, turn, uh, turn back from the state like we're doing now, our insurance costs go up in terms of our health, uh, you know, we can only do what we can do.
Well, my, I guess I was gonna say, is what if that, that index that you were referring to is negative?
Never has been.
Yeah, I didn't, well, I don't, I didn't think so either.
What if the moon falls out of the sky tomorrow?
What if, yeah, what if the moon does, but it could go sideways, though.
It has not.
Could go sideways.
Mayor.
Alderman?
I, I wanna, we've looked at salary raises in the twenty and nineteen years since I've been here, and, and all kind of different methods, but I kinda wanna ask that, and I don't know how long this would take Stephanie to do, but we have got somewhere close to three hundred employees, I think, that get stepping grade raises, give or take a number. I'd like to know how much it would take in real dollars for each percentage point to give a one, two, and three percent raise to those employees who don't get a stepping grade raise. So, and what you're essentially doing is raising the top, but not raising the steps. And I know this is not an easy thing, uh, but hopefully that, if that's soon, and I'd request that as soon as we get it, that it be distributed through the mayor's office to each alderman.
Is that the top salary?
Well, salaries, other words, it, let's, there, there are, there are certain amount of employees, and it's probably out of our nine hundred or eight hundred and whatever, nine, that's twenty-two, eight and nine hundred employees. There's probably about five hundred or so of them that are topped out. The other three or four hundred are gonna get a raise anyway, so I'm gonna go with five percent, three percent. And so, what I'd simply like to know, is it, does it, we know it costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars virtually, one percent now to give a raise, two eighty per point. How much does that reduce if you only give a raise to those employees that aren't already gonna get a raise on their anniversary day? Okay. It gives us a different...
You wanna, you wanna, if, if, that's a general answer, look at it a little bit closer and then...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, all right.
Okay, and yeah, I'd like to know it, because I think it's gonna give us a little different...
You get a twenty-one year...
Um, to give a one percent increase without, um, uh, to those employees who don't get a step increase would be a hundred and forty-two thousand, and those with the step increase would be a hundred and thirty-six. So, it, it is about half.
Okay, now, does that number include FICA and pension and all the other items that we go with?
Medicare.
Thank you. So, that gives us a number to also look at. Instead of looking at two eighty, we also can look at two, at one forty-two.
One forty-two per point, right?
One forty-two per point.
Per point, so three times one forty-two would be, I'm not even gonna start trying to figure it out, but it's, four twenty-six, but...
All right, uh, having had that discussion, uh, I think I'd just soon get a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll move.
All right, motion made, uh, motion made and seconded to adopt the budget as amended. Uh, any further discussion on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, oh one, uh, ninety-two, Mayor Hayes.
Hold it. We've already adopted oh one ninety-three, let's go to oh one one ninety-one. Let me call it.
Okay. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate contract to purchase certain real property along the Arkansas River on which the Lastra Maintenance Company Incorporated is currently located, appropriating four hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, and the...
We need to amend Exhibit A.
Uh, yeah, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, and amend in, uh, Exhibit A, uh, in that year, what is that, Paul, is that year? Do we need to do that?
What's that?
Amend in Exhibit A.
Yes, Exhibit A, that's the, uh, contract that I was working on today with them.
Motion made and seconded, then to Exhibit A, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we adopt as amended?
Second, on the, on the, on the, Thomas?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is, I know this comes out of another line item. I just hate to think about us spending four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for land when we can't, uh, we don't know what we're gonna do with our employees, uh, that's, is one of the things bothers me. I know it, as I said, I know it comes out of another line item, but, uh, I know that they'll read in the paper tomorrow that we can't spend four hundred and forty-five thousand, but we have how many money for them, so that kinda bothers me.
Well, Alderman, as you know, uh, the, the, the vote, uh, uh, we asked the public, uh, to approve us being able to, uh, split the, uh, the funds of the one cent sales tax and that we would spend half on capital and the other half on operations. Uh, you know, a number of the things that we just approved in that budget on the capital side, uh, we are, are moving forward with. And, and so, you know, this money actually is gonna come out of, you know, that, uh, nine and a half, uh, eight and a half million that we borrowed, uh, that we'll be paying back out of the capital side. So, this money really isn't even coming from the penny itself, it'll be paid back from the penny. Uh, but, uh, it's out of the capital side of the budget, and, you know, by law, it's not a, obviously, it is another line item, but, you know, we, we could all be, uh, in big trouble if we tried to spend, uh, capital money for operations. So, uh, it's, you know, it's just an impossibility, and I hope our employees understand that, uh, that, you know, that we, uh, we're, we're gonna go as far as we can, but we can't go with this money. Uh, and, and let me just mention that, uh, uh, you know, that we arrived at this amount. Uh, we had an appraisal done, and, uh, and Mr. Lastra had an appraisal done, uh, and, uh, and essentially, we split the difference. The biggest, the biggest, uh, difference in the two appraisals had to do with the price per square foot of the, uh, of the raw land, and, uh, and that, uh, our appraisal came down at two dollars, and their appraisal came down at two dollars and, and, uh, excuse me, three dollars. And so, essentially, I offered Mr. Lastra, uh, the difference, uh, we split the difference in the two appraisals. And, uh, and what I have normally done, uh, is a practice for trying to resolve these kinds of nation matters is offer, you know, up to ten percent, uh, which in this case that I did, uh, to, uh, to avoid the cost of, what I call the cost of litigation. Uh, there's one other thing that I also indicated to Mr. Lastra, and I, uh, and I understand this is, is part of, you know, the recommendation, uh, contained in this legislation, and that is that he be allowed to remain on the property, uh, rent-free for up to one year, uh, if we're not needing the property for substantial construction. I think that word is operative, substantial construction, either due to the presidential library, uh, bridge, uh, being, uh, moved forward with, or if we have some development on our side, uh, if there's neither one of those needs arise, then he can stay there for up to another six months. That's part of, uh, of the recommendation. But if we need it because we wanna build something on it, uh, or something that's being built, uh, adjacent to it that the public has an interest in, then, then it's, uh, it's a year.
Of course, you know, we take it off the tax books, the schools don't benefit any from, you know, our buying that, taking it off the taxes.
No, but they sure will benefit if we put a big hotel, uh, right next to it, and that's what the whole idea is, uh, you know, and, and we're also trying to work with some other, you know, developments. So, I, you know, while I agree with you, I don't think the schools get very much of that, uh, right now, and they're likely to get a whole bunch more, at least that's what our goal is. Uh, Alderman, Barry?
Do we have to fill in the blank on closing on page, uh, section nine? And what we just amended?
I think that's clearly something the mayor can negotiate. They, they wanna close in the first quarter, and, you know, that date will depend on after we look at the environmental survey and so forth.
We're gonna try to move forward, uh, you know, with some, some reasonable dispatch because, uh, you know, that one year begins, uh, after closing. And so, you know, while we're not gonna run down to the abstract company, we're, we're gonna move forward with, with, uh, reasonable, uh, approvals.
It is blank, it's, it's blank, it's a blank there, you wanna...
I think what's, what, what, what the sense of the, that, that, uh, that agreement is, is I think in part, uh, you know, giving me the authority to negotiate the blanks, and I think that's what...
That's correct.
City attorney's side.
Historically administrative stuff, we, the council has allowed the mayor just to negotiate, what's the closing date? It could be people's schedules off for different, and just variety.
So, so if it's December this year, that's, then he has another eighteen months possibly, you know?
Yeah, whatever that closing date is.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that it's done either, you know, no later than the first quarter. I don't know if you wanna stick something in, uh, the closing show occur at such time, you think we, no later than, uh, we'll put, uh, April, April one, two thousand, I'll just put, let's put, uh, February fifteenth, let's give us a month and a half.
Mayor, it could take thirty, it's gonna take longer than thirty days to get your environmental.
Well, actually, they already have a phase one environmental.
They already have...
Uh, let's give us sixty days, give us, uh, till March first.
March, okay.
So, move.
All right, mo- motion made and seconded, that March first be inserted in the date. No later than March first, two thousand and two, uh, on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we adopt as amended?
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me just mention, uh, while this, you know, virtually completes what, what I think the city needs to do, this does not get us under the bridge. So, there is one more, uh, parcel that I think the city ought to be interested in, uh, in acquiring because of coming off the end of the bridge. So, you know, uh, this has almost got us there. Uh, I think I was quoted as saying, uh, if we could fall off the bridge and land on, on our land now, uh, after we close, it's a little bit further stretch than that. I know Mr. Boils is, uh, is drawing the lines for me, and I think we'd have to have a pretty good, uh, uh, pretty good jumper, uh, Olympic quality, but, uh, but we're, we're real close, so...
That parcel of land, about the same size?
Excuse me?
That parcel of land that we might...
Well, it, it just, it, it depends on what we think we need, and I know we need to get to the bridge, and we're just about there. So, you know, the next parcel doesn't have to be all of what one owns, it just happens, Mr. Lastra, this is all of what he owns. Uh, you know, and this is on the river side of, of the levee, is what, what I'm, I think the city ought to be interested in. Uh, with that, next item?
Resolution oh one one ninety-two, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock to utilize federal aid monies to develop and improve the hike and bike portion of the River Trail project.
Move for adoption.
Second, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, resolution oh one one ninety-three, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution approving a lease agreement between Arkansas State Building Services and North Little Rock for property at nine fourteen H Street for operation of a daycare center and related activities.
Move for adoption. Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, resolution oh one one ninety-four, Alderman Dobbins.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating six thousand two hundred and ten dollars from the city's Act sixteen ninety-one funds.
Uh, move for adoption.
Second.
We get our questions answered.
Uh, yes and no, uh, and, uh, and, and what, uh, I talked to the assistant finance director, Mr. Leathers, and he indicated to me that he would be happy to visit with our city attorney in order to make sure he was clear. Uh, you know, we also discussed whether there was any need to do any, any, uh, requesting of opinions by the attorney general. And, uh, and, and, uh, Mr. Leathers did not, in fact, you know, Christmas and, uh, and New Year's gotten away, and he said he wouldn't be back in the office till after the first of the year. Uh, I'd be happy to if the, if the council wants to go forward and it's okay with the, uh, proponent, uh, to, you know, instruct Ms., uh, Thomas, uh, not to cash, uh, cutting any checks until we have a confirmation from our city attorney as to what procedure we ought to follow, if we wanna go forward with that.
Yeah, what is the city attorney's recommendation?
Well, go ahead.
That's, well, essentially, I don't see any legal obstacles. What this council specifically asked me to do is to get with the state. Uh, I, I made a phone call to the state, I didn't get through, but Mayor Hayes got through immediately to the state, and, uh, they said they could not meet time to the first of the year.
And, one of the things, though, you don't see any issues here, any red flags or anything at this point.
Yeah, I, 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 the issues that I see, I think, can be overcome with the written agreement with the two entities.
And which is gonna be a part of the normal courts, uh, uh, setting up a contract with the city and...
Yeah, that would be our administrative, I mean, we, we would, you know, obviously, it's our feeling that, that this has to be of a capital nature, and, uh, and as such, you know, we'd have to have some kind of written understanding with those who are receiving these monies, uh, and, and, and some agreement with regard to accounting as to how that money will be tracked. So, that are the things that, that our city attorney will be talking to the Department of Finance about, and, and then we'll work with our own Department of Finance so that we can ensure that, that, uh, what this council directs, uh, to be done with these funds, uh, in a position where we can audit that.
And that's, that's the important thing, then, uh, you talked about with the applicants, and they understand that, and they just wanna make sure that we've just continued to move forward with this because, uh, there, at this point, you know, you still have, uh, needs out there with kinship caring, and you have kids out there that need to continue the use of these programs, so...
Uh, with that, uh, any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh one one ninety-five, Alderman Dobbins.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars from the city's Act sixteen ninety-one funds.
I have an amendment.
Oh, you need to move for adoption.
Move for adoption, and I have an amendment to get the correct number in there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, what's your amendment?
The amendment is, in the section one, it, that, the amount should be thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety. City attorney was feeling generous.
Faced upon an article in the paper and the application, I added two numbers and I should've left one of them off.
The motion is thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That's to change the title and section one.
Yes.
And the secondary S.
Wherever it appears, that number should read thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we adopt as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to adopt as amended.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All of the resolutions were up to ordinances.
Go with the first one.
First one is ordinance oh one ninety-four, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number seventy-three thirty-seven to amend the general fund, sanitation fund, street fund, parks and recreation fund, capital improvement fund, equitable sharing fund, and the electric department budget, first reading.
Would you spin the rules, place it on its second reading?
Now, Alderman Gibson, second, is it on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending budget ordinance number seventy-three thirty-seven to amend the general fund, sanitation fund, street fund, parks and recreation fund, capital improvement fund, equitable sharing fund, and the electric department budget, second reading.
Would you spin the rules, place it on its third reading?
Second, on the motion to spin.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending budget ordinance number seventy-three thirty-seven to amend the general fund, sanitation fund, street fund, parks and recreation fund, capital improvement fund, equitable sharing fund, and the electric department budget, third and final reading.
We got a couple amendments, uh, and, uh, you wanna go ahead, Alderman Gibson?
Well, exactly, I believe there's three items that are amended.
Stephanie, you wanna come up and, uh, let's do the amendments, and then we can talk about it.
Um, on the revenue, the total dollar revenue did not change, but there was an adjustment of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the water contribution. Um, the state taxes were previously amended, and that amended amendment was taken out, and the difference was to county sales tax, which is now, um, decreased by five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Instead of three twelve.
Instead of three twelve.
There's three, three items are highlighted.
Right. Taxes state, taxes, uh, county sales tax, and, uh, water contribution. Uh, any further discussion on that motion to amend?
Well, I don't know most, I'm just trying to help you understand water contribu- contributions, that's what I don't understand.
That, that's essentially, uh, franchise, uh, fee as well as, uh, payment lieu taxes, is that not correct?
That's a contribution to us, or we're making a contribution to them?
To the city.
To the city, okay.
See, in a full year, it's five hundred and thirty thousand, that's in our two double oh two budget.
Okay.
There's a new line item, and we got, for the three months, or whatever it was, or this year, we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I just wanted to understand it, I hadn't seen that item, so.
We've never had it, but see, Little Rock gets it all the time, so, make it right, we had to get it, 'cause they were sure gonna get it. Understand that.
All right, on the, on the motion to amend.
Mayor, Mayor, may I ask a question? Well, okay, uh, Mr. Gibson just brought up something, and it popped light, uh, the, uh, franchise fee. Are, are we gonna save any incremental portions of that for improvements in the system, or are we passing it through the budget? You, you, you know, you and Stephanie are probably the only two to know that, right?
No, we're not going to, anybody who's read the budget sees that it's a line item on bottom of the revenue page.
Okay.
And that's how this city had ended up, part of why this city had a balanced budget, based on, you, you got, probably, that you'll have to- What was the stepping rate rate that was totally together? For the, the, for the employees, for the two double oh two, or two double oh two.
What's your question, Alderman?
I mean, the value of the stepping rate rate is several hundred thousand.
Well, we, we, we talked about it two- Or ba- basically, what he's telling me, then, is that we did not hold that money for, uh, water improvement, or, or- that we talked about doing, that it went into the general budget, okay.
That's right.
So, I, I, just if I may, I just, that's, that's why I'm asking the question, it was new, and, and, uh, I don't know, if this is going to the general fund, and we could disperse it at will, there's nothing tied to it.
Correct.
Okay.
It's already budgeted.
Already budgeted, on this year.
Oh, well, yes.
I would hope down the line that we could find some method, because we've got an infill of fire hydrants that we're gonna have to fill.
Well, one of the things, and, and, obviously, we can do that, uh, one of the things that we're gonna have to transition through this year is transitioning about half of our business from utilities accounting because of the, uh, loss of water, excuse me, water and wastewater. So, you know, we'll have a, a better feel the latter part of this year as to exactly where we are in terms of that transition, and, and those employees, we're gonna make every effort, uh, to make sure that nobody loses their job, uh, as, as, as we lose that significant amount of work, so this will help us as we adjust through that, uh, loss of revenue, and we'll have a better picture, uh, this time next year, uh, certainly in the latter part of the year, to understand where we are in terms of utilities accounting.
Well, Mayor, I thought that was part of the agreement going in with the, uh, Central Arkansas Water, that, uh, employees' numbers would remain constant, at least through the transition period, which is now.
Well, see, the, the, the answer to that is yes, but you're talking about two sets of employees. You're talking about those that work for North Little Rock Water, and those that work for Little Rock Water, now they've worked for Central Arkansas Water, then you're talking about employees that work for utilities accounting. Excuse me, Alderman.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, you're, you're, you're talking about the employees that work for the city in utilities accounting, as we have contracted essentially to bill, uh, uh, to issue the billings for the water department, as well as the wastewater department. So, what's happening is, you know, with Central Arkansas Water, that billing function is now, uh, no longer going to be with us after March or April of this coming year, uh, as well as wastewater, uh, which, you know, made some sense, has decided to go with the new billing entity, uh, Central Arkansas Water. So, where in the past, you know, North Little Rock Utilities Accounting has performed the billing function for water and wastewater, you know, come March or April of this coming year, will no longer do that. So, therefore, we're gonna have a reduction in, uh, in demand on that department. Now, we're gonna work through transitioning, you know, the reduced needs in terms of those employees, and, and do all we can to make sure that nobody, uh, is displaced because of that loss of work.
Well, I hope, when you say we do all we can, I hope, I hope surely we have some times, and, and from the management levels, that there are some holes that need to be filled, or some positions that are out there, that we-
Reassignments that can be made.
Right.
I mean, some people may be doing different things, but, you know, I, I think that, that we feel pretty comfortable in that those that, you know, that wanna, wanna have a job, we'll be able to, to provide a, a job for them, uh, but they may be doing something different than what they're doing now.
At a, at the comparable, about the same pay level?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's certainly the goal, and I think we'll, we'll be able to reach that objective, uh, and, and this, you know, this transition year will give us a lot clearer picture of how we're gonna do that, and, uh, and, and the revenues that we need in order to, to try to make those, uh, uh, that adjustment as painless as possible. Uh, we on the amendments, is that where we are?
Yes, sir, we have a motion, we need a second.
On the amendments?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion made and seconded, on the motion.
Gibson? Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
I'm sorry?
Uh, the Parks Department has a huge difference.
Mr. Rhodes, come on up to the microphone, I don't know whether you are gonna dodge the bullet tonight or not, because we've got a big bullet there, a big piece of the pack, or looks at, looking at the Parks Department, uh, you know, Alderman Vestal?
Uh, is there any one particular factor why your budget is up or off?
Uh, not one particular factor, I, I can enumerate several, if you'd like to hear those.
Please.
Um, first of all, over the last several years, uh, just due to inflation, things like that, uh, we've, like, given a seven percent increase in raises, uh, and, and that's the key factor, 'cause seventy percent of the budget is, uh, salary-related, uh, that has impacted it, uh, revenues have not grown to, to keep up with that.
Seven percent?
Well, five percent, two percent, uh, raises in the last two years, cost of living, so that, that's an increase in salaries.
Okay.
But that, that's a salary increase, but that, you know, most of those costs, or seventy percent of the budget is, is salaries. Uh, primarily this year, uh, the, in the past, uh, we've had, uh, uh, personnel services, like in nineteen, in, I guess, two thousand, the year two thousand, uh, we had in lapsed, uh, personnel services, and this has helped keep our budget balanced, uh, was in two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that was under budget, considering all the, all the budgets. In two thou- and, excuse me, that was ninety-nine, two, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. In two thousand, we had two hundred, approximately ten or nine thousand in lapsed salary and personnel-related, uh, situations here.
You know what he's talking about, lapse salaries, uh, where he's put, officials that were vacant working.
Vacant positions, things like that, and this, this has been there and helped us balance, uh, our budget. This year, uh, of all the full-time positions, they were all filled. Two people left, one left in September, one left first of December, their payoffs were thirty thousand. So, in, in actuality, that two hundred thousand, which has helped bail us out, or helped keep us a balanced budget, was not there. So, that, that's one key thing. But specifically this year, uh, items like the golf course revenues were a hundred and eighty-two thousand under budget, uh-
Who projects, who projects out the golf course revenue?
Uh, Steve Ralston and myself, uh, the situation in ninety, ninety-eight, uh, golf was at its all-time high, significant, uh, revenue was being brought in, it was subsidizing other programs. There was a drop-off in, you know, a, a drop-off, last year was significantly, uh, bad weather, we consider that as a factor, uh, but still, uh, and tried to balance what it was, but, but the main thing is, all golf courses now, there's more competition. Uh, in the Little Rock situation, if you'll notice, they've jumped their prices up to seventeen dol- or gonna jump their prices to seventeen dollars around at their municipal courses, ours on weekend are at fourteen. Uh, so, that, that's the biggest revenue problem, is that one hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Which of the, which of the three courses do we operate lost the most money?
Uh, Camp Robinson.
What about, how did Emerald, Emerald Park do?
Emerald Park is, uh, actually pretty close now, paying for itself. There, there, once I saw this, there's been things I've tried to do, Mr. Witcher's aware, Camp Robinson, one thing we talked about doing at the commission, was giving that back to Camp Robinson. Uh, the commission at this point in time has said, hold on to it, let's look at it, see what we can do. Uh, that, that loses us approximately fifty thousand a year, that, that's just one of the, one of the items.
Let me ask you a question or two, uh, is, is the commission still considering some proposals that are before it with regard to the, uh, management or operation or subleasing, if you'd say that, of, of Camp Robinson?
Uh, yes, we will, uh, actually, and, and, let me just say this, I am the manager of Parks Recreation, or the director. It is my responsibility to see this doesn't happen. It snuck up and went boom, particularly because the two hundred thousand in lapse salaries. Uh, the commission is aware of the problem, we are setting up a special meeting the first of January, because this situation is, will happen again this next year if we don't do something. And we're gonna have to do some things, uh, we might be looking at, uh, we're looking at some things like already, uh, with the Lions Club, uh, letting them operate Funland, uh, still working to figure out a way to, to better work with, uh, say, Camp Robinson in some way, they're contracting that out differently, or something to save money, so that we're not subsidizing, uh, some of these other things. There's another, another, uh, area we're working with, with PAL, Police Activity League, as far as one of the centers go, but, uh, the commission will be me- will be meeting first, the first, first or second week in January to discuss this next year's budget and ways to alleviate this from happening in the future.
Mr. Rhodes, may I ask, would you venture a guess, on a percentage of your total basis, uh, of your budget, how much the recreation centers cost, and then tell me, on, on, on a venture guess, and I won't hold you to it, on a percentage of how much revenue they bring in totally?
The budget, uh, for the centers and the pools is approximately one point two million. Now, as far as revenues? Uh, this year, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, so a hundred and sixty-three thousand versus one point two million.
Okay.
Alderman Witcher, uh, have you finished?
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's go around Alderman Vestal, uh, and then we'll go to Alderman Barry, go around there.
One thing, um, as far as that goes, our recreation centers were not built to be revenue producers. Uh, golf courses, uh, traditionally, we treated them as they're supposed to pay their own way, and if they're not, cut them loose and let them drown like the hydro plant killing. Okay? And it's just not, it does not make financial sense to hang on to a dead horse and let it drag you down. That's all I'm gonna say, man.
Alderman Barry?
Uh, North Heights is our, is probably our greatest pool recreation center, the farthest revenue delta.
Yes.
Do they, how much do they lose? That?
Well, I cannot tell you specifically, uh, they, the budgeted revenue was fourteen thousand, they brought in nine thousand five hundred and four dollars, as sure.
So they, so they did well? And they?
Yeah, they're closer than-
Five thousand under budget, turn on, with five thousand.
But, I mean, but, Mayor, may I, may I venture into this conversation again?
Of course, you know, one of the situations we have with our pools is we're closing the pool, like, on the fourteenth or fifteenth of August, because we, we don't have qualified individuals to operate it, and we're not opening it until sometime in June, so, there's a real short period there, and perhaps, and, and I'm not even sure if, if we open it for a longer period of time, is the cash flow would be there, but there is that opportunity in that particular case to provide services to the community.
That's the problem with most of the pools, the city's big campaign employees, that- Let's, let's kinda keep it in order, uh, Alderman Barry, let's go around this side, uh, Alderman.
Thomas, would you go on? Yes, I was gonna ask him, is this senior citizen, that's gonna be your bailiwick?
Uh, at this point, I do not know, that's up to-
We've, I've been talking with the city attorney, and there may be a recommendation that, uh, we have a commission, but it may be under the, uh, you know, under the, in the area of parks that we might put that, but, uh, you know, that decision hasn't been made yet, and obviously, or at least that recommendation hasn't been decided on, and the council will pass on it.
That's, I was gonna tell him that's gonna be another expense for your, for you to become out of your-
We, we, we understand, but what, what we recommend along those lines, Alderman, and we, we know of your enthusiasm for the senior citizen center too.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but I'll expla- the, the main revenue loss was the, uh, golf courses, uh, hamburger tax was slightly under by about one percent, which was only netted out of seventy-one thousand, but, uh, as far as expenses go, uh, the main three areas that caused the overages were, uh, let's see here. Was the concession budget, which was Funland and, uh, soccer concessions, actually, the soccer concessions, they made, they actually were higher than projected and, and, and made more money. Uh, but overall, uh, also, overall, the, the concessions brought in additional forty-five, forty-six thousand, uh, dollars. But, uh, the overage on expenses was a hundred, was a hundred and forty-three thousand, and mainly, the reason for this was, when we got into Funland, uh, there were a lot of things, uh, fencing, uh, particularly, had to be replaced because it really was unsightly and unsafe, uh, there, there's standards as far as entrapment goes, and things. Fencing, uh, painting, just, just several things, a lot of, a lot of the items, uh, some of the equipment broke down. Uh, I, I, again, I'll, I'll still say this, uh, Paul is here, representing the Lions Club, he wears many hats, but, uh, they, they've looked at it, uh, all of us, in, in the long run, uh, that will be a moneymaker. It's just, uh, getting there, uh, at some point, uh, it's, it's gonna take-
Let's, uh, let's, let's, you're interrupting you, but Alderman Dobbin, maybe we can try to get some specific questions.
My, my question is, as far as concessions from the golf courses, who do we get that turned back, uh, money into the city? How does that work, uh, not concessions from soccer field, but from the golf courses specifically?
Uh, yes, they're set up the contract, there's different percentages, uh-
Help me understand those percentages, do we get all the money, or one percent?
The grain fees, we get a hundred percent, carts, and I believe it's, and, and this is off the top of my head, either ten or fifteen percent, we, of the carts, I think it's ten. Uh, the concessions, set up similar, ten or fifteen percent, retail part, or the, the golf clubs that are sold, the clothing that's sold, we get a percentage off of that.
Why don't, why don't you go ahead and give me a summary of that, rather than just ten or fifteen, let's just get specifics on what we get, so we can pass it out to the council.
I can, I can pass that on.
Yeah, because the rea- my question is, if we're not, it seems to me, it's our park and whatever contracts out there, we, we need to get some revenues from that, and increase revenue, if we have parks or golf courses running in a deficit, and you don't keep things that are deficit around too much longer, now, is it a question of management? And I think we need to take a serious look at that, for some reason, it seems that other departments in these tight budget seasons are able to meet, meet their numbers, so we, we'd have to look at some hard looks here, whether it's management, middle management, what is happening there, to, you know, if it's wrong, let's correct it, and I mean, you gotta have some will there to make those corrections, there may be some tough choices, now, I don't know what the Parks Commission, I'm sure that I would visit with some of their members and talk with them, but, it, something has to be done, and, and Alderman Vestal, you're absolutely correct, those recreation centers weren't supposed to be revenue producers, however, some, by some innovative means, some parks and, some, uh, recreation centers have adult league, men's basketball and things, they're getting a lot of activity, generating some, some revenues from that, uh, some use out of it, and I think that there's other organizations in the city seems to do a real good job of getting, uh, young people and adults around, uh, perhaps we could learn from them and try to implement some of their programs.
Let's see, currently, we have, uh, a men's league with ten teams, and about approximately fifty teams in youth basketball, at this point in time. fifty teams in youth basketball at this point in time.
I know, we, we put a pretty heavy drain on Mr. Rose and his staff for about a month, month and a half, when we took over fund land, as you all recall, you know, that time, and there was a lot ever put into that, and so, you know, I think, I think so far as the number of young people and kids, you know, that enjoy that, I very well think it's worth it. And I do think in the future, it will become a revenue producer, even with the kinds of really advantageous rates that are being charged, and the concession, I think will continue, but getting into it at first, it was a, it was a wallop, not only in the cost, but also in the personnel that had to be directed toward it. So we, you know, we look to make sure that next year at this time, we won't be standing up here with a one hundred thousand dollar deficit. Alderman Vestal, excuse me, Alderman yielding?
Okay, green fees, Burns Park, and they're broken out by the different golf courses, five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, that's, that's, that's a good chunk of money. Where do I see the concessions in, on here, though? I mean, I see concessions, six thousand dollars, now, obviously, that's not all we're getting out of the golf, I mean, it doesn't say where it's coming from.
It would be percentage agreements, sixty-two, there's different accounts, Burns Park's sixty-two.
Percentage agreement, I just see one percentage agreement, account number sixty-two fifty-eight, and that's only eight thousand dollars.
Okay, there's sixty-two forty-two, and then sixty-two forty-five.
Okay, sixty, all right, thirty-six thousand, percentage Burns Park, that's, that's what we're getting out of that, thirty-six thousand.
Right.
Five hundred and forty-six in green fees and thirty-six thou, how much does it cost to play around the golf out there?
A weekend is fourteen dollars.
Fourteen dollars.
If you're, unless you're senior, then there's a discount.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Any other questions?
I just, it looks on here, the hospitality house is down in revenue, and also, the Burns Park Tennis Center seems to be a little bit down in revenue too, is that correct?
Um, Burn, hospitality house is down. What happened last year when the ice storm, the first ice storm hit December thirteenth? We had several rentals towards the end of December, and instead of refunding money at that time, the groups, some money was refunded, but the groups that annually come in, what we did was allow them just to rebook for this year. So that's one reason that's down. Tennis is actually, let me look here.
Other than court fees, tennis, is that Burns Park, or is that, it's down about twenty-five?
Yes, well, we budgeted, it's, it's actually up from the actual in two thousand, but it is down from the budget.
Alderman Vestal?
Uh, Mr. Rose, back to the golf courses, please. I would like a breakdown on the dollar amounts that are generated and the percentage that we get of that, dollar for dollar.
Okay. I have another question.
I wanna see how much revenue that's producing and how much revenue we're getting and whether or not we're in a habitated position in that whole situation, or someone else is.
Alderman yielding?
Okay, so it's fourteen dollars to play, does that include your, your cart fee?
Yeah, cart fee is additional.
And how much is it?
Half carts, ten dollars. So it'd be twenty-four dollars for an individual play on the weekend.
Okay. Okay, well, it gives me a little bit more, but he's asked for a breakdown, so that'll, that'll cover it. Who audits all that?
City can audit, does audit, there's very tight...
When's the last time it was done?
I think we annually, don't we, I mean, we annually audit, we have an independent contractor that does some annual audit.
Right, I'm not saying anything wrong, I'm just saying that.
Excuse me, Alderman, I don't know how much detail that is, but then we've got our own internal auditor, if there's any specific reasons.
But, but the trend is, in golf courses, is down, approximately twenty percent. I talked to Brian Day, when this problem started happening last year, their golf courses are down, were down about twenty percent. We thought it contributed a lot of it to the weather, but it's more of the, it's more of a saturation of golf courses, is what it seems to be.
Mayor, may I venture in again? Perhaps one of the things you may or may not be aware of, you know, the investment that he has in the carts and the concession equipment and that stuff is all his money, it's not our money, and so we don't have an investment in it, other than the cart shed. And one of the things that we're gonna see in the next two or three years is we're gonna see some golf courses that are gonna go under in Central Arkansas area. So, you know, believe it or not, we're doing really well compared to some golf courses, but we're, you know, there's some golf courses that are gonna go under in the next two or three years.
Alderman Thomas?
Did you say that we get a percentage of that cost of that golf course?
Uh, yes, we do.
And the beer sales or the concessions, we get a percentage of that?
Yes.
That's all, that's all his money.
And I will check those percentages. That itemizes those, and I'll circulate it to the council. Is there any other, any other, Alderman?
This, one thing, in the adjustments we made tonight, you've got the revised revenues, you've got the revised expenses, rough numbers, Burns Park Golf Course brought in five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, cost five ninety-seven to operate it, a loss of about sixty thousand. The tennis center brought in about a hundred and fifty, cost two hundred and fifty-four thousand to run it, cost a hundred thousand dollars to run the tennis centers. The big losses, yes, are at, not as much as Emerald Park as it is at Camp Robinson, but the numbers, if you'll take the legislation we had, revenue numbers are right here, and each of the individual expenditures are right there also.
Well, I'm sorry, but, all right, I'm gonna finish on this. You know, one other thing, thing, you know, some of the council members may not be aware, you know, Mr. Ross, and out of the money that he takes in from his concessions, as part of his percentage agreement, also hires additional personnel that help run the course that the city didn't pay for. He pays for them directly out of, out of his revenues. So, you know, you may not be aware of that, and I'm not sure how many of those folks, do you have any idea?
I can give you organizational chart, his and mine, to show you how many, that shows city employees.
Yeah, why don't you do that? That might help them too, 'cause I think there are probably six or, six or ten of those folks that he pays out of his pocket to run our course.
I guess one other question that you brought up, there, how many of our employees do we have there at his disposal, that he, he's actually their boss?
All of those people are, I have him supervise all those people, we primarily take care of all the maintenance employees, which is approximately fifteen employees.
See, I get...
And then, then there are three other employees that are considered assistant pros that help take green fee, green, green reservations or tee times. There's actually two at Burns Park and one at Camp Robinson, at the city place.
And we pay, we pay their salaries.
Yes, we pay their salaries.
Some of those complain that he tells them, "I'm your boss, you're gonna do what I say," and they, some are pretty unhappy with that.
You gotta have somebody that, you know, give consideration, so Alderman Gibson.
One last point, and that is that the Burns Park Golf Course had a ten percent in overtime for the year, and that's...
Part of, part of the, what's also in here, remember, was the ice storm, employees there as well as at, at park maintenance, did work several hours overtime cleaning up brush and debris from the golf course, Burns Park, the other parks, and around that area. We were reimbursed approximately a hundred and fifty thousand by FEMA to cover those expenses, so...
And that's, that's a point I wanna bring up that goes with this, is that, that you had, you had all the expenses, but the revenue was a one blank item in, in the revenue side, a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So where you had employees that were employees of the city, but they actually did some work in some other areas of the city, basically on the golf courses and cleaned it up, there re, there's an offset on the revenue page of a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars that goes with that number, and it would take some time to go through and try to determine how it broke down by department. But the golf course at Burns Park, those employees had more overtime than basically anybody else, there's more of it.
Park maintenance.
Park maintenance, I think.
Any other questions? Or are we on, motion to adopt is amended?
Yes, sir.
Is there, let me get another motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt is amended?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
In ordinance abandoned, a sewer Eastman located in Lot One, Block Fifty-four, Park Hill addition to the city of North Hill Rock, western county Arkansas, commonly known as three seventeen West K Street, first reading.
Move spin the rules, place it on the third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
In ordinance abandoned, a sewer Eastman located in Lot One, Block Fifty-four, Park Hill addition to the city of North Hill Rock, western county Arkansas, commonly known as three seventeen West K Street, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Next item is oh one ninety-six, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
In ordinance abandoned, North Hill Rock, ordinance seventy-two forty, establishing a reduced permit fees for residential construction permits performed by an eight designated neighborhood target area, first reading.
Move spin the rules, place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
No.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes. In ordinance abandoned, North Hill Rock, ordinance seventy-two forty, establishing a reduced permit fees for residential construction permits performed in a designated neighborhood target area, second reading.
Move spin the rules, place it on the third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
No.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
In ordinance abandoned, North Hill Rock, ordinance seventy-two forty, establishing a reduced permit fees for residential construction permits performed in a designated neighborhood target area, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Well, I had a question, so I didn't get to answer.
I don't mind backing up, I don't mind backing up.
Go ahead, ask a question.
Uh, do you really, I mean, do y'all really think this is gonna promote, I mean, that any construction, just because, you know, there might be, and I saw the, the amounts in the new project, it just didn't look like to me that was enough to make somebody decide, "Oh, I'll build something down here because I'm gonna save fifty dollars."
I don't, you know, Alderman, obviously, I'm proposing, I, no, I'm not gonna sit here and say that this one item is gonna, is gonna cause anybody to, to, you know, go out and build a home in this area, basically, the areas, everything south of Interstate forty, but, but I think it is, 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 again, one, one step in what I would consider the right direction, letting this council, this community know that we are committed to, you know, revitalizing urban living, and, and, you know, that area of our city is, is urban as it comes in terms of, of a target area that I think we're spending literally tens of, hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to do. So is, is this gonna, you know, are we gonna have a floodgate, people trying to take advantage of this bargain? No. Are we gonna lose very much money? Mr. Oles did a, did a number review, and I think last year, or maybe up to this year, we'd have lost less than a thousand dollars in terms of the number of permits. So to me, it's, it's just, you know, it's one more statement by this council, albeit minor, that we're gonna do, you know, that we're, we're supporting urban revitalization, and we're gonna do what, you know, what's reasonable to underline our support for that.
Okay, I, I mean, I can understand that, and, and, a target area to me is a smaller area. This goes all the way past four forty, out in areas where, like Willow Beach and places where there are, you know, two hundred thousand dollar houses being built. I mean, and then there are also newer developments that are gonna go on out there. I mean, I, I wouldn't think that would be the area that would be in the target area. To me, I mean, I would think the target area would be...
You know, I don't want to accept an amendment that includes the entire city, you know, if, you know, if that's, but no, I think...
Well, it's not fair to people that live, that might be building something in, if you're gonna build a three hundred thousand dollar house down there on the, at Willow Beach, and then you're gonna build one up in Indian Hills or, or whatever, I mean, why should, see what I mean? I, I don't, I don't, but I can understand a target area of, of Bearin Cross, it looks like here, and then, and then everything, out, these Worthington out there, I can understand that.
Alderman, you know, I mean, I'm sure when you have an area that is as broad as the one I've designated, you know, you can cite examples like that, I'm sure that you could even have a target area of Bearin Cross, or, you know, or Rose City, or some of the others that, that you could come across something like that.
I think it's good, but I mean, I'm just seeing, I'm seeing a lot of high-end housing out there, and, and so these people are gonna, you know...
You know, if you wanna start drawing a line, Alderman, I sure would, wouldn't, wouldn't argue with it, but that's, that's the line that I'm supporting right now. Alderman, Alderman Gibson, then Alderman Whitaker.
My question, where does the line end there, because there's a little funny line that comes across there at the bottom, if you take the line that runs from Highway three ninety-one down, it comes down and then it takes a, like a thirty-degree or forty-degree turn and goes across to another thirty or forty-degree turn, is that the end, is that the line?
That's what's shown, I agree, you probably should just stop it. We wanted to make sure we included all of Rose City, Glenview, and that area, so I think you could pull it back to four forty and accomplish much of that.
Well, we need some president...
We meant, this one is showing coming down three ninety-one, and I guess he just drew a line off on the computer.
But then, all the houses in Willow Beach that are gonna be built are, are being, they start about where that line comes in.
That's correct, and they go east, so they're mostly out.
So anything that's built in Willow Beach down here is not included. Willow Beach is full, except for...
Well, yeah, Willow Beach is full, I mean, I, I don't know, that's a new...
There's other ones, there's other developments.
But there is, there is other residential developments that's been on the books now five years, and not a single house has been built.
Well, yeah, I mean, and we, we need to encourage this, I mean, this goes right back to what we talked, I know, we've been talking about as far as redistricting and moving lines and increasing density and population, I mean, this, this right here is, to me, is a, a step in the right direction, it, it helps reduce some costs, and yes, there's probably some high-end houses there, but I guarantee you this, there's, there's more of a target area that would fit to low to moderate income than to the high to very high, and you can challenge those numbers, but...
Correct, I agree.
So, so let's, let's, it helps, it helps a lot of people here.
Let's just, let's just do this by vote, and then if you got any amendments, then we can come in with amendments. So is there any amendments? All right, now, I have a motion?
I have an amendment.
Well, motion, all right, what's your amendment?
To the western boundary of the target area to be Interstate four forty.
All right, that's a motion, is there a second?
Eastern boundaries.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
All right, on the motion to make the eastern boundary of the area four forty, is, any discussion on that?
May I make a substitute motion?
Uh, it's an order?
That the eastern boundary shall be Highway three ninety-one down to Highway one sixty-five, and then it runs along one sixty-five westerly to four forty, and then to the river.
I'll second that.
That takes out all of, that takes out all of Willow Beach, it talks out all of development that may happen around the other side of Willow Beach, and leaves in only industrial, takes out just those industrial lands.
I thought there's people building...
No, they are, but I hope they build them.
You know, and that, probably the last time I'm gonna, substitute motion to amend, but...
All right.
It was in order.
But I, I did it once, I don't, I'm not gonna do it again, there's, there's a second to that?
Okay.
All right. All right, everybody, it seems like everybody's okay in it, so let's, let's, let's vote on the substitute amendment, I guess that's what you call it.
Yeah, Martin's word.
Martin, we're voting on Martin's words, you got that? Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
I've got the line drawn here for you too, Ms. Whitby.
Thank you.
All right, everybody in favor of Martin's words? Ms. Whitby, if you'll call a roll.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin?[1744.82]
All right, Ms. Whitby, continue the roll call.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
All right, now I have a motion to adopt this amendment.
So move.
Second, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Dobbin's.
No.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Dobbin's.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right, we have any last words from the council before we move into a new year?
Yeah.
Alderman, uh, Witcher, we'll start with you.
I know.
Mayor, it has been brought to my attention regarding our new, uh, emergency phone line for utilities, that when individuals call on a rotary phone, that it does not properly function. Could someone look at that for me? Rotary phones.
It won't.
Rotary phones.
It won't.
It won't, okay? You know, most of the folks that have those, that have those phones will be elderly folks slash, what can we do?
All right, Ms. Whiter.
A lot of systems have that problem with rotary dial.
All right.
What our system will allow the customer to do is to put in a verbal message, and the verbal message will take care of their report.
Okay, can, can you check it, make sure?
The verbal message?
The verbal, they will take a verbal message.
I'll be wired to tonight.
Yeah, check, check and make sure that you, you know, that we, that we clearly understand, that people can clearly understand if they don't have a, a, a phone, uh, phone, what they can do to get through to our, uh, uh, problem solver.
Yes, sir.
Electric.
Thank you, Ms. Whither.
All right, uh, Alderman Barry.
Oh, uh, I'd like to say that I could talk to Stephanie before she leaves, but, uh, there's one other thing I'd like to say, you know, doing a lot of, lot of work here getting the bike path out, and, and, uh, I use the hydro quite a bit to fish at, and since there's a lot of folks that are in town for the holidays, and they're spending some time around, you kinda got the cabin fever, you wanna get out and do something. They've done a lot of work at the hydro area and on the bike pass, make it look real nice, so if you have some time, you might drop out at the hydro and maybe go fishing for a little while and take a look around what we're doing.
Take a warm coat with you over the next day.
That's right, I, it's kinda chilly, but, you know, I mean, it give you, it give you a little something to do in North Little Rock too, and, and, uh, look at what's happening.
We're off, we're off and proud of that trail, and, uh, as soon as we get some weather right, it's gonna be paved all the way from, uh, downtown to very like a dam, so we're awful, awful proud of that, and, you know, I get my chamber commerce speech going here in a minute, but I'll do that later, Aldman, Aldman.
Yes, speaking of pavement, uh, the, I guess the pavement program, uh, for, uh, the various streets, uh, who has that list, and when do we, I got a few more streets to add to it that we need to take some?
I'm having the, uh, the, between the engineering department and, uh, public works, we're gonna be trying to compile a, 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 a list of streets that we want, uh, to recommend to the council in terms of paving, so please contact, uh, Ed over there has got it waving, so contact engineering, uh, if you've got any streets that you think need particular attention, 'cause I'm gonna have him look at all of them, you know, and, uh, and any of, any of the streets in your ward that you think are, are very needy, let them know, so we can act sure that they get a chance to review it before we present you all the program.
Include Marrow Circles.
Include Marrow Circles, one that's being asked, so.
Right.
Uh-
It's on the list already, I, I put it there.
All right.
Once and sales tax came in handy.
Well, any other comments from the council? Uh, no one wants to talk about Alderman Gibson anymore then?
He's smiling. Well, I got the opportunity to introduce our newest employee at City Attorney's Office, except for our honeymooning Alderman who walked in late, but, uh, Andrea Woods comes from, uh, actually, Ohio, Fayetteville, that Ohio in Sherwood, she's a native of Fayetteville. She's got some municipal government genes in her, her father was, uh, city administrator for Fayetteville for seventeen years, and, uh, then she was a felony prosecutor in Ohio, returned to Arkansas with her husband, and was, uh, Sherwood Personnel Director, and now we have her here in North Little Rock. So although Jason left for Sherwood, we stole, uh, to Cabot, we stole somebody from Sherwood, so I'd appreciate y'all welcoming Andrea.
Andrea, we're glad to have you. All right, microphone's open.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ms. Connie, the system you're gonna check out tonight has very interesting features which you probably won't have to check. I was the one that called into it and see what it would do, 'cause I was programming emergency numbers for my mother, and I didn't get to Alderman Witcher tonight to tell him what I found out. Uh, if you don't say anything, it does a caller ID on it. If you hit, hit the code to try to block the caller ID, it still does the caller ID, and believe me, they call you back within ten minutes to see what's going on. So, and the voice, if you don't speak directly into it and real slow and clear, it will not activate, so basically, I don't, if you wanna check it. The only thing, I don't know what it does yet, and I was working one of your people, is what will it do on an unlisted number? Uh, will it display it, and I had a honeymoon with an unlisted telephone number to test it, so basically, it's a good system. Uh, by the way, my name is James R., my apologies for not-
That raises a- Well, no, just let Mr. R. go ahead.
Go ahead, let, let me ask.
Uh, go ahead, finish your comments, and then-
Okay. Um, I have one complaint for the Chief of Police, and you know what that is? They're still parking in the handicap zones. Uh, one seventy-two or one seventy-three is your victim most of the time. Uh, I think y'all have done a good job this year since I've been keeping up with it, I'm one of the citizens who has kinda just sat back and complained, and not taken a part in what was going on, or expressed myself, and basically, I wish y'all a Happy New Year, and somebody had a question.
I just had, had a que, all numbers that dial that eight-eight-eight or that emergency, eight, that toll-free number are captured via electronic caller ID system, is that correct?
That is correct.
All numbers.
It is also, uh, they have got it programmed where you cannot bypass it. There is only one way to get around it and give you phone calls that you'll wonder what's going on, and I won't, I'll tell Ms. Connie how it can be done, but there's only one way, people want to start playing games where it can be done.
Well, how does the system, how does the system tell us, or tell, how does the system tell the system that someone called in and no, and they-
Let me tell you what I did, and then maybe explain every bit of it. First, I called in, and I left a contact number, three seven six eight one one one, which is time service. It popped up the number I was calling from, which was my house, my mother's house. Within ten minutes, I get a call back from the electric department, won't know what my problem was that I had called in. He had all six of my calls, he went back and verified where I had put the number in, he went and ver- verified where I'd left a message where it could be understood, he went back and said, well, there's no message here, but we have the caller ID which tells you where you're calling from. So they responded real quickly, and a gentleman I worked with, Ms. Connie, I don't remember his name, but he was, he was quite interested in things that I could make it do. Like I said, the only thing I have not found out what happens if you call in with an unlisted phone number on that caller ID, when I find someone with an unlisted phone number, we're supposed to check it out.
We appreciate it.
Thanks. I wonder, uh, you're a resident ward too, I wonder if there could be a commission or something? He's got so much energy that y'all could get him on something to help us.
You're out of order right now.
I'm serious.
Order again.
I'm serious.
Thank you, Mr. R., we appreciate it. Microphone's open.
My name's Harry Gottsponer, and just a little over a year ago, uh, my wife and I, we purchased a piece of property on four oh one East Military here in North Little Rock, and I was a contractor, we built a house, and at that time, to my knowledge, there hadn't been a house on that piece of property for at least ten years. We wanted to be in addition to the city, and at the time we started building the house, uh, we had the foundation completely down, I had gone by all the codes that the city, uh, presented to us, and there is a ditch adjacent to our property. Uh, it runs the full length of our property plus, uh, part of another gentleman's property, uh, that is open. Uh, up to that point, there is a culvert, a forty-eight inch culvert. From that point to Military, there is, it's just a plain ditch. We received a considerable amount of rain here just a little over a week ago, uh, up until this time. I have talked to, uh, Alderman Bestle, as well as the, uh, Mike Smith, engineer, as well as the code department. Uh, I have tried to work with my neighbor, uh, on this ditch, uh, to help keep it clean, as well as, unfortunately, it's caused some problems because he has dogs, and there's a section where his fence goes over the ditch, and we together agreed to try to keep something there to keep his dogs in the yard, uh, but it has turned into a problem because every time there's rain of any amount, stuff comes down through the ditch, and it basically builds a dam right there. Uh, when we had all this rain a little over a week ago, it presented a tremendous problem. Uh, my wife and I stayed out there in the rain for almost three hours fighting that thing. Uh, I literally cut the stuff loose, uh, I have pictures, uh, that I actually presented to Mr. Bestle, uh, over three months ago, probably. Uh, we've been discussing this situation for at least six months, um, and the code people are, I mean, uh, Don Wood, uh, everybody seems to be frustrated because the gentleman owns this ditch, but yet it is city drainage, and there is so much erosion in this ditch, it's just unreal, I mean, just in the time that I've lived here, uh, on this piece of property, um, and it definitely needs attention. Uh, I don't know if the, my neighbors listen to this or not, but I do not want to be a bad neighbor, but this blockage in the ditch needs to be removed somehow, some way, uh, so that it does not cause a problem. Uh, we invested a lot of money in this piece of property, it's not in the floodplain, uh, and we feel that we're being violated because our property, we are attempting to buy this property, I mean, we're, you know, making payments on this property, and we feel that it's a great injustice to us that if water comes out of that ditch, it floods our property. Uh, I was told by the engineer that, you know, why didn't we build the house up higher? Or, there's a building in the back that's, uh, sixteen by fifty, which is according to the city code, uh, no one said anything. Uh, we just, we went according to everything they told us, no one said anything about building it up. The way we look at it, wouldn't make any difference if it was built up any higher. The ditch, we should not be penalized from water coming down that ditch and coming over the embankment and flooding our property, because in the way we look at it, the ditch needs to be repaired and looked at, and something done to it, and, uh, Mr. Bestle and I, we've discussed it, and it's like, uh, evidently, there's no money to do anything, there's, uh, but yet, uh, you know, we are trying to be in addition to the community.
Let me, let me just ask Ed, uh, and I'll visit with Mr. Bestle, and we'll see if there's anything that can be done, uh, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I have a little bit of difficulty knowing what would be the best thing for us to do, so let me visit with our engineering department, and Alderman Bestle, and see if there's anything we can do to help out.
Okay, Mayor, I appreciate it. We, you know, up until this time, there probably hadn't been any reason for anything to be said, 'cause there hadn't been anybody on the property for ten years, but unfortunately for us, you know, here we are.
Well, we wanna try to be good neighbors too.
Well, thank you very much. Happy New Year, by the way.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Uh, let me wish all of you a Happy New Year, oh, you got something? Yes, sir. Station name?
I'm, I'm starting new down here, this is my first year down here in your city, and I live in the neighborhood here, the worst part of North Little Rock. Everybody, when I say at work where I live, they say you live in the zone?
There, there's no worse part of North Little Rock, it's not all heaven.
Well, when I can't even get a pizza guy to come in my neighborhood and deliver pizza, that's pretty bad.
Tell us what your problem is.
Well, I got drug dealers bumping into one another, I can't keep off my property, okay? Police tell me I gotta put up a no trespassing sign. Well, I got, in two blocks, I have twelve abandoned houses, I call it, caught it one day, and they all have no trespassing signs on them, so the police don't arrest anybody for no trespassing. I got garbage in the street, I have abandoned houses, and I just have drug dealers, luck and right. I, I want my neighborhood back. I like, I like where I live, but the police department tells me to move.
See that guy right there? Raise your hand. That's our police chief.
Well, his officers tell me to move, I, I wanna know what to do.
Right, he's not, he's, you know, we can't, we can't control every one of those that, that work for us, but we sure don't want you to move, and you can visit with him, and we'll see what we can do and make-
I, I invited, I invited his sergeant and his detectives to sit on my front porch and drink coffee and eat donuts and watch the show, they tell me it takes seven months to investigate somebody. So, you know, they can sit on my front porch, me and my neighbors, and, and, and drink coffee, and there's, there's my neighbor right there, I hope, and we can, they can watch the show, you, you know, we can't even get codes to come on, condemn the buildings.
I tell you what, we're, what, you, you visit with our, our police chief right after we adjourn the meeting, and, uh, and we'll start, uh, seeing what we can do.
Uh, I'm Rocky McDaniel, I did wanna address a little bit, the people that are over in the neighborhood are coming from other parts of town that do not live over there, and they're hanging out on the streets. Last night at three-thirty in the morning, we know that was a pretty cold night last night, I came in from out of town and drove through the neighborhood, and there's people standing out on the street at three-thirty last night in the morning, so that was a pretty cold morning to have somebody out standing on the corners and working the streets. The prostitutes, the police have arrested them and put them in jail, they stayed gone in jail over there for a little while, but now they're back again, they're out evidently again, but, uh, they're out on the streets when you know that, when you know it's pouring down rain, you see a bunch of people standing in the street in the rain, don't even have a raincoat or an umbrella on, and it's, it's profit enough for them to stand out in the street, you know they gotta be doing something. And we just have a few houses over there that we have left vacant because, uh, no one wants to move over there in that neighborhood, like he said, when you tell them, they call it the red zone, and they all know the neighborhood, and we're trying to wait on the neighborhood to get better. Uh, the city had a streetlight program, they were gonna enhance those streetlights when the arena opened, and we, we didn't get that, that didn't happen yet over there, and we do need some lighting and some cleaning up over there, and we appreciate anything y'all can do for us over there, thank you.
Chief, would you visit with, uh, those two gentlemen, and then, then talk to me, and we'll see what we can do. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hayes, uh, to the other members of the council, fellow citizens, good evening. My name is R.D. Kenzie, I'm with the International Masons at Ninth and Magnolia. I too share the same concern as those gentlemen over there. Although I don't live in the area, I do frequent the area there, we have a Masonic Lodge there, and I'm there quite often. I too have, uh, witnessed a lot of the activities there. I've talked with some of the neighbors over there, and I, I also share their same concerns. Uh, we have some concern, as you know, Mayor Hayes, when we first came into North Little Rock and we met with you, and I do wanna commend, um, the city of North Little Rock, uh, the, the police department, uh, for the fine job that they have done over the years, 'cause I know several years ago, when we moved into that area, uh, as a gentleman said, that was one of the worst areas in North Little Rock, and there was quite a bit of gang and drug activity over there, and I know that, uh, and after having met with you, Mayor Hayes, that, uh, that the city did an outstanding job in helping to move out some of that traffic. But, uh, it, as, as it's indicated there, these people are moving back in. I have some concerns, Mayor, and if it's appropriate, uh, I like to just kinda mention them, and I don't expect anything to be done at this time. Um, as it was mentioned earlier about the, uh, the loitering on the streets, Rocky mentioned about the loitering on the street, all times in day and night, and as we know, that does, uh, that's a good indication that there's drug activity going on on Magnolia. Uh, also at, uh, eight nineteen Magnolia, there's a vacant house there, and, uh, I understand that the owners may or may not plan to do some things about that. Uh, I've been informed that, uh, that there are people in and out of that place at different times of the night. I, I think that situation does need to be addressed. But the drainage in that area, you know, we, we, we've discussed this on numerous occasions, uh, I think it's really, uh, sad that people have to live in an area like that where the water, whenever the rain, I don't care how, uh, heavy a rain it does, the water accumulates in that area. I've been over there on occasion, and I've seen little kids playing in that water, you know, and that, and that just took, I mean, it just, I feel sick by it. I, when I see the kids, I, I tell them, I try to warn them about that, but of course, you know, little kids are gonna do that anyway. Um, and I've heard that it's about the old drainage system in that area, you know, and I think there needs to be some, 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 something addressed to that issue. That is a major issue there with the accumulation of water over there, of course, uh, uh, the sanitary, uh, effects of that. Um, the street department, now, whenever that water does drain, it leaves an awful lot of mess on the streets. I've called the street department, and I've asked them, you know, the police come by, bring the street, uh, sweeper, or whatever they need to do to try to clear that up. Just so happened I was over there the other day, and there was a street sweeper in the area, and I stood out there with Jerry, and we watched the street sweeper guy come everywhere in that area except between Ninth and Magnolia and Eighth Street. You know, I couldn't understand why, he went all the way around the block and, and did all of Eighth Street and all those other areas, but between Ninth and Eighth, you know, he never made it. Of course, all of that, that, that garbage and all that stuff is still there, I think that needs to be, I mean, if nothing could be done about the drainage system, the least that could be done is whenever that water does drain, at least send the street sweeper over there. We've had people come in from all over the country on occasions, and I've called, we've done things over there at the temple, and I've called and said, listen, please get the street sweeper out there. Now, we have had some good response in the past, I don't know if there's anybody here from the street department, and I will be glad to visit with you a little bit later, but they have done that in the past, but lately, they have not. Um, uh, the neighborhood cleanup, you know, I, I- Um, uh, the neighborhood cleanup, you know, I, I spoke with someone not long ago, we were interested in trying to do a neighborhood cleanup, and as you know, Mayor, we've done that in the past, and we've even went out and adopted senior citizens and went into the neighborhood and, and painted up their houses, and helped to, uh, paint them up, and fix them up, and things of that nature. This is what we're about. Uh, I hope that we could react if they program such of that. Um... In a bottom line, it just looks like that area just lacks the attention. Uh, it, it's just there, and I mean, I was hoping, and I, I thought that maybe, uh, with the arena, that maybe there would be a little bit more attention in that area there. You know, we try to do the best that we can do over there, but it doesn't do any good when we go out there and try to clean up, and, and all of this trash and stuff just continues to come on. I agree with Rocky, he mentioned about the light program over there, I think we do need some additional lights over there, that might help to deter some of that, uh, chief, uh, and some of those that are involved. Connie, good to see you again. And, uh, so at any rate, I think that does, uh, that, that might be something that, that could be addressed. So, those were just some of our concerns, Mayor, and I do, as I said, I mentioned, I do know these gentlemen over there, and you've got some good people in that area that have been there for many, many years, and I think that they, that the city owes them a little bit more than what we're giving them. I am a registered voter in North Little Rock, uh, so, you know, that needs to be noted also. And also, I'd like to take the opportunity, uh, to congratulate Stephanie, I've never met her, but anybody that hangs in there twenty years, they need to be commended. Thank you very much for your time.
Happy New Year. I have a motion. And, uh, may two thousand and two be, uh, happy and prosperous and peaceful for all of us. All right, on the motion.
Gibson? Yildin? Dobbin?